Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. Before we start, I thought we'd do the Pledge of Allegiance real quick, so if we could all stand and do the pledge. Thank you very much for coming to our first town traffic committee meeting. I'm going to go over a few things here so that everybody understands the purpose of what we're doing here tonight. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to introduce the public to our Traffic Safety Committee and to the processes which we abide by when working through traffic-related issues. Tonight's meeting will consist of a series of presentations by staff explaining some of these processes and some previous outcomes and future projects that we have been working on to better assist the flow of traffic in our community. At the end of this meeting, the public will have an opportunity to address the committee. Please keep in mind that the purpose of this committee is to work through traffic-related issues. For the most part, we will not be able to provide a direct response to any concerns brought to our attention at tonight's meeting. Instead, I invite you to utilize the forms provided in the lobby, is that where we put them, in the lobby? Thank you, to document your specific traffic concern and provide us with contact information for follow-up. A collection box is located next to the forms for your convenience. And after tonight's meeting, the completed forms will be reviewed and the appropriate city department employee will follow up with you to address your concerns. For those in person at our meeting tonight, a refrigerator magnet with the three most utilized city department phone numbers for discussing traffic concerns is available next to where the traffic concern forms are located. Did I go the wrong way? There we go. In 1978, the Rockland Municipal Code, Section 108020, directed the city to establish a Traffic Safety Committee chaired by the Chief of Police. The committee is utilized to collaboratively work towards solving traffic-related issues citywide. Participating on the community, I'm sorry, on the committee by order of the council or the traffic engineer, the Fire Chief, the Director of Public Services, and the Chief of Police. Now, of course, we have our expert staff members from each of our departments that participate in the committee and also provide us all of the data that is needed to make some decisions. Also included in our committee, at their request and ours, is Rockland Unified School District. They usually have a representative there to help us with some of the school-related issues. Our ultimate goal is to develop solutions based on empirical and statistical data. And so we need that data to make the decisions once the information is brought to our attention. I do want to take a minute to introduce the committee. I'm Chad Butler. I'm the Chief of Police. I've been in law enforcement for 28 years, 17 years with the City of Rockland and four years as your Chief of Police. Seated next to me is Fire Chief Reggie Williams. He comes to us just recently from from the city of San Jose with 25 years' experience. Seated to my right is the Public Services Director, Justin Narker. Justin's been here for 18 years. He has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Sacramento State University. And he serves on our major, he has served on our major accident investigations team. And the city currently contracts with Bennett Engineering Services for our city engineer, and Ed Kraus, who's at the far end, has been assigned that awesome task. And he does a great job with more than 25 years of service in the traffic engineering business. I'd also like to introduce you to some of my staff who will be responsible for parsing through some of the traffic concerns that we get tonight and then reaching out further to speak with you and get more information. So in the far corner back there is our Operations Lieutenant Passodori. Seated in front of him is Captain Bart Pataveras, our Operations Captain, our Support Services Captain Trent Jewell. And then in front of him is Sergeant Jonas Wilks. Sergeant Wilks is in charge of our Community Services, which includes our traffic unit. So generally speaking, if you have some concerns tonight and we get your information, Sergeant Wilks will be reaching back out to you to grab future, further information so that we can work towards a solution. I thought the best way to start this tonight was to have a couple of presentations, first off, on our, some of our traffic stats and our accident stats throughout the city. And then we're going to talk about some projects that we've done. And then we're going to follow that up with questions that we get quite a bit at community meetings is, why is the speed limit what it is in the location that it is? And what I mean by that is, a lot of people wonder how we came up with a 35 mile per hour speed limit as opposed to a 25 or a 45 as opposed to a 30. And we're going to discuss that and talk to you about the law that requires us to go through quite a process in order to come up with that number. So first up, I'm going to invite our Rockland Police Crime Analyst, Sean Baird. If you could come up and do your traffic presentation. Do you have another clicker or no?
I'll give it to you. Is it on? Okay. All right, like the chief said, my name is Sean Baird. I'm the Crime Analyst for the City of Rockland Police Department. I'll be presenting some stats tonight on our collisions. So city roadway statistics, we have more than 560 miles of roadway within the city, 2,000-plus stop signs, and more than 70 traffic lights. Thousands of vehicles traverse our streets on a daily basis, and yet we maintain a relatively low traffic collision rate. So in the past five years, Rockland's averaged 404 total traffic collisions per year. That includes injury, non-injury, and hit-and-run traffic collisions. 2020 is projected to be well below this average, and I'll show you that in a few slides. So in 2020 alone, the current traffic collision total is 244, which is less than one collision a day per, for the year. On average, the City of Rockland averages 404 total traffic collisions. If 2020 continues at the same rate as the previous months of the year, projected totals are well below the last five-year average at 307 collisions for this year. In the past five years, collision totals peaked in 2016 at 492. Since then, totals have decreased each year with the current rate, worth the current year to date at 244. In the same time period, population in the City of Rockland has increased 17% overall, and yet we've had a 40% decrease in traffic collision since 2015 and notable declines for the past three years. I feel like I'm out of order here. So 70 to 80% of our total traffic collisions are non-injury. In looking at the five-year comparison, non-injury collisions have decreased a total of 51%. And non-injury hit-and-runs have decreased 28% since 2015. Minor injury collisions account for 14 to 22% of all collisions and have also decreased a total of 31% since 2015, with an average of 71 minor injury crashes per year. Again, 2020 is well below this average at 43 for the year. If the rest of the year continues at the same rate, 2020 projected totals will end at approximately 54 total injury collisions. Hit-and-run injury, major injury, and fatality collisions are rare, with one to five occurring each year, an average of less than 1% of our total collisions. Unsafe speed is the most common primary collision factor, but that does not necessarily imply driving at a speed over the speed limit. It means that the speed was greater than what was safe for conditions. Improper turning, traffic light violations, DUI, and improper starting or stopping also rounded out our top primary collision factors. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Sean. It's important to know that we list unsafe speed as a primary collision factor. The vast majority of the unsafe speed collisions are rear-end collisions, which means that the car in front of them was stopped. And so the safe speed for making contact with that car was zero, and anything above that is an unsafe speed. So it's just important to understand the distinction in that. Okay, our next presentation is from our Public Services Director, Justin Narker. Thank you.
Thank you. So this evening, I wanted to go over some of the projects that we've been working on. And when you think about projects, usually you might think of a roadway expansion project. Some of this involves technology. When we look at what we're involved with, there's the five Es of road safety, which include engineering, education, enforcement, and emergency services and evaluation. Our division is primarily on the engineering and evaluation side, and then we get to participate on the education side as well. And we leave the enforcement, emergency services, usually the guys with guns and hoses. One of the small things that we've been implementing over the last several years is the countdown pedestrian signals. If you go walking throughout the city, if you have kids that go to the high school or the junior high, we kind of started in that area. And we began this because we received a lot of complaints of students blocking the intersections specifically around the high schools and the junior highs. And we found that a lot of these students would be crossing the street or deciding to cross on the tail end of a flashing "don't walk." And right when we were kind of looking into this, some new technology became available. It's called a countdown ped timer, pedestrian timer. And what it would do is it would, if you've seen them, they give the walk indication. And then when they start the flashing "don't walk" indication, it now provides a countdown. And what we have seen is that, especially the youth, they make educated guesses now, and they look at the countdown timer and they figure, okay, can I go or do I have to stay back and wait for the next pedestrian signal timing? And we have seen a huge reduction in congestion at our middle schools and at our high schools because of this technology. Another project that we have had recently is the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA. We are in the, in the business of removing barriers for residents. The ones that come to mind specifically for me, being in the public works types of things, are sidewalks and curb ramps. And for those of you that are familiar with Johnson-Springview Park, it's an older park, and the curb ramps and the sidewalk that front that street are very steep. And we've had issues with people being able to traverse those safely. And so we've, we're able to get some grant money to detour, if you will, or create a different path of travel for those pedestrians going in that area. And so now it goes in towards the park and fronts the park, and then it cuts back out. But you'll see throughout the region that we have, you'll see more and more yellow truncated domes on the curb ramps before we can do pavement upgrade projects or required by state law to upgrade those pedestrian facilities to meet the newer ADA standards. One of our other projects is the Pacific Street Pedestrian Bicycle Upgrades. If you were traveling from Loomis towards the City of Rockland on the going, that would be southwestbound traffic, we didn't have any shoulders at all. For the longest time, it was just simply a two-lane roadway with an uneven shoulder. And we were able to secure some funding to upgrade that facility. This is a picture of what it used to look like in its previous state. And now we have still a two-lane road, but we've provided some optional left-turn capacity in the future for future development so that that is available should that development take off. But we also have associated bike lanes on this section and a pedestrian path as well. The first phase was from the Town of Loomis to Delmar. The second phase was actually from Delmar to Americana, where we did have sidewalk, curb and gutter on the one side of the street and a bike path, but not on the other. And so now we have a shoulder or bike path in that area. So we're kind of filling gaps. Filling the gaps has been part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for trails and connectivity. And while Parks and Recreation focuses on the trails inside the parks, Public Services has the opportunity to look for additional connectivity outside of the parks, such as on Pacific Street here. Another recent improvement that some of you might be aware of, especially if you've got middle-school-aged children. Springview Drive at Third Street and Sunset Boulevard, we had a very interesting drainage swale, which caused vehicles to slow down when trying to turn onto Third Street. It really made the intersection inefficient. We also had a left-turn lane that was not adequate during the peak hours, especially with the school traffic. So we identified what needed to be done at that location. The drainage swale, at face value, should be pretty simple. You're just dropping a pipe. The amount of underground utilities and conflicts that we encountered out there was beyond crazy. So we went from this situation where we had this drainage swale to now it's a smooth transition. And you will see people that are in the habit of slowing down through that intersection still slowing down because they, in the past, you'd bottom out your car, and they're still getting over that habit. The other project that we're working on that's really significant is the Intelligent Transportation System. We've partnered with WAVE broadband to provide connectivity, kind of a backbone infrastructure along our major corridors. And if you look at this map right now, you'll see, right now, to get around Rockland, we've got pretty much three routes. We've got I-1865, which pre-COVID was quite a mess. Traveling it right now is not nearly as chaotic as it used to be. And that's the orange lines. The blue lines are Pacific Street and Sunset Boulevard. And then the red lines represent the Whitney, Argonaut Midas area. And so to get from one side of town to the other, there's really only three routes through Rockland. And a lot of that is due to the topography that's around us. But the Intelligent Transportation System is, the idea is to do more with less. The first part of it is to, right now, we have a bunch of traffic signals on Sunset Boulevard and Pacific Street and Sierra College and Rockland Road that all of them work independently of each other. And the goal with this system is to connect all of them so that they're working as a team. We have to be careful in a certain regard because right now, we see a lot of traffic, or we did pre-COVID, bypassing Highway 65 and using Sunset Boulevard as a faster route through town. So we have to be sensitive to the fact that we don't want to make it too easy to traverse Sunset Boulevard. We don't want to invite all of that traffic onto our streets. But at the same time, we do want to make it faster so that we can try to alleviate the Whitney, Argonaut Midas area and make our arterials, which are built for more traffic and higher speeds, try to invite them to use the arterials instead of cutting through, I'll say, older, older Rockland. So the Phase 1 is Sunset Boulevard, like I've mentioned, Pacific and Rockland and Sierra College Boulevard. This will give us the ability to add some traffic cameras and be able to see different patterns, do some additional studies that can be cost prohibitive right now, work with our schools and pedestrian timings to facilitate, you know, pedestrians moving around a little bit better. A good example of that that we've seen during COVID is the Sunset Whitney Recreation Area. If you haven't been out there, I highly encourage you to go out there. I guess it's not a great place to social distance because there's so many people that are out there using it. But we have the area of Sunset West, and we've seen a lot more pedestrians and cyclists using Sunset Boulevard to get down to that bottom entrance of the Sunset Whitney Recreation Center. And so we're looking at what improvements we can do to help pedestrians and cyclists traverse the intersection of Sunset and Stanford Ranch a little bit easier. It's a big intersection, if you've ever tried walking it, to give them better access to this new park amenity that we have. That's the end of my presentation regarding some of the projects that we've been working on as a group. And I don't know if this is the time for questions or if we're going to do that later. Okay. And then do I have the next one already? Okay, then it's my, you can put that back up, Corinne, because I'm, it's the same thing. We're just going to go down one more slide. So I'm not going to reintroduce myself. But it looks like I might have just shut it off. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so setting speed limits in the City of Rockland. So I've been with the city for 18 years, and I've had the opportunity to go through several cycles of speed limit evaluations, if you will. And I've learned that is complicated, especially in the state of California. Speed limit, the thing that most people are familiar with is the term "speed trap." And speed traps are illegal in California. And pretty much from what I've learned, and the police chief can correct me if I say anything incorrect here, but in order to use electronic devices such as radar and lidar, roadways need to be surveyed for enforcement. Otherwise, if there's a posted speed limit, they would have to follow the vehicle and pace them, if you will, to be able to issue a citation. Since I've been here, the preferred way of doing enforcement is by lidar and by radar. We've always had at least a couple motorcycle officers that that's their main responsibility and their main job is to go out and enforce. The California Vehicle Code is very explicit on how speed limits should be established. And it points to federal and state recommendations in the California Manual the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And then Caltrans has put out a manual for setting speed limits to help jurisdictions set enforceable speed limits. Also, something that helps us in Rockland, our municipal code specifies that any roadway carrying more than 2,000 vehicles is required to have an engineering and speed survey for enforcement. So it's not about enforcement, sometimes it's about funding as well. All of our city roads have a classification. The residential streets are called local roadways, and they do not receive any federal funding. Our collectors and our arterials, they do receive federal funding. And there are many grants and federal funding requirements that require us to have roads surveyed to, as a condition of getting dollars to maintain those roads. And so that's something that we're aware of as well as we're going through the process. When we're establishing speed limits, California Vehicle Code and the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, you know, some of the things that are taken into consideration are the collision history, pedestrian and bicycle traffic, the amount of traffic and the speed of traffic, the different roadway characteristics, the roadway geometry, and, you know, the area, if it's residential, commercial, et cetera. After considering those factors, traffic engineers set the speed limit at either, either at or below the speed driven by 85% of vehicles surveyed. That brings us to the 85th percent. This is considered what's reasonable and prudent, that most people will follow the, the speed limits if they're considered reasonable and prudent. So I have an example for, for you to kind of illustrate the process that we go through. If speed data is collected and 85th percentile speed is 37 miles an hour, law dictates that we have to round that number to the nearest 5 mile an hour increment. So if you're 37 miles an hour, it's rounded to 35. Law also provides that the engineer can reduce that by a 5 mile an hour increment if the conditions justify using the lower speed limits. In the City of Rockland, that's, since I've been here, that's always been used and always been utilized. Because of the bedroom-type community that we are, we prefer a more pedestrian-friendly roadway. And so in this case, at 37 miles an hour, it would round to 35. Using that 5 mile an hour increment, the speed limit would be posted at 30 miles an hour, and that would be considered enforceable by our traffic courts. Conversely, if you had something at 38 miles an hour, per those regulations, you round to the nearest 5 mile an hour increment, which is to 40, and then using that 5-mile reduction, that gets you to 35 miles an hour. And those posted speed limits would be enforceable in our traffic courts, and our officers could easily do that. Now, one of the things that I think is important to understand about speed limits is that the general California, the basic speed law is that no driver should drive at an unsafe speed for the given conditions. And so if an officer is out there and they see something that warrants an unsafe speed, let's say the speed limit is 50 miles an hour and someone's driving 50 miles an hour, but there is severe rain or fog, let's say. And technically, an officer, if they felt that they were going too fast for the given conditions, they could be given a citation for, for driving at an unsafe speed. So the basic speed law prevails. There's also some other, it's called a prima facie speed limit, which they are speed limits that are set by state law, like in a residential area. If the road isn't too wide and if it isn't too long or uninterrupted, it can qualify as a residential speed area where the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. And we see that with business districts. If you've had any teenagers recently go to take the driving test, they always get stumped on the fact that it's 15 miles an hour to go over a railroad crossing. That's considered a prima facie speed limit. So there are some that are just given by the California Vehicle Code as, as basic speed laws. And with that, Chief, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. I think sometimes it's important to just put a little bit of data out there in front so that we can have the opportunity to discuss some of the issues that occur in our community. And a lot of times, it's speed and why the speed limits are set the way they are. The California Vehicle Code requires a 25 mile per hour speed limit in the residential neighborhoods. That's not something the city controls. Generally, it's the collector roads that the city controls the speed limit in and has to survey. So your Sunsets, your Stanford Ranch, your Park Drives, the general residential street speed limits are 25 miles per hour, as I'm sure most everybody remembers from the DMV handbook, all 48 pages of it before we tested. So before we move on to allowing the public an opportunity to come up and talk, I just wanted to go over one more time for the people who are joining us with Zoom on how we get traffic concerns brought to our attention. I earlier mentioned the magnet that's in the back in the lobby. Please feel free to grab one. It does have the three contact phone numbers for the Police Department, Public Services, and Code Enforcement so that we could assist you with that. If you haven't had a chance to fill out a form or if you're on Zoom and you still want to know how to get ahold of the Traffic Safety Committee or the Traffic, the Police Department or the Public Services, you can log on to our webpage. And if you scrolled, the City of Rockland's webpage, if you scroll down to the bottom under the Contact Us tab, you'll see something called Access Rockland. And when you click on Access Rockland, it gives you a whole variety of topics, and one of them is traffic. And there are a few drop- And there are a few dropdowns that then allows you to get a little bit more specific so that we know if it's the Police Department that needs to see that or Public Services. So we try to send you to the right people to do that with. Now, these, keep in mind that anytime we're doing this kind of stuff, these are for ongoing traffic concerns. If there's a problem occurring in your neighborhood that's actively occurring in your neighborhood, we're going to want you to contact our dispatch center through the non emergency number. And if you believe it's an emergency and something that's a danger, please call 911. What I'm putting out here now is for ongoing community concerns in the neighborhood or another location in the city so that you have that opportunity. So again, you have the phone numbers that you can contact on the magnet. You can always contact Police Dispatch and ask to be transferred to the traffic unit. If they're not available, please leave your phone number and your name so that Sergeant Wilks or one of the traffic unit officers can get back to you to gather the information that they need. And then again, on the city's website at Access Rockland, and you can do that there as well. Okay, how many people do we have on Zoom that would want to come up and address the committee? Do we have anybody?
Chief, you might want to mention, or maybe I can mention, that this would be the appropriate time for those Zoom participants to raise their hand. And it looks like we have a couple right now. If you'd like us to go ahead and unmute, we have just two so far.
Okay, and may I just ask in the audience, just a hand of how many people plan on coming up? Okay, perfect. All right, so we'll go ahead and start with the people in the audience. Please come on up, state your name, and then if we could try to limit comments to five minutes. And that way, we can give everybody a chance that wants to speak the opportunity. So whoever wants to come up first, please.
Hi, Chief.
Hello, sir.
Bill Hurtog. It was, it's kind of a going back into the history books, 1978 was the ordinance. The first Traffic Safety Committee meeting we ever had was in 1986. And I, and the statistics about the traffic signals I was impressed with because when I started in 1981, we didn't have one. We had a flashing red light at Rockland and Pacific, so we have progressed. My concern is Hillside going into Skyline and returning from Skyline. I'm the first house on the left going up. Unfortunately, I'm the last house, the first house on the right coming down. I have worked with the chief, I've worked with the vice mayor, we have spoken about this. And we're, we're making progress. I think ultimately, and nobody wants to hear this, but ultimately, it's going to require speed humps, not speed bumps, but speed humps. We have to get to that. I know how it takes the process to get to that, but we're going to have to get to that. And I know the arguments about the fire department and how it slows down fire trucks and emergency vehicles. But there are speed humps throughout this city in private domains. Apparently, they're okay there, but not on our public roadways. And I understand that, and it's open for discussion. The chief and engineer in Public Works has done at least two, two surveys of the roadway for speed. I don't want you to share that with us because my neighbors are going to go berserk. Because those numbers are not accurate. 38 miles an hour, I'll share that one. The highest speed on that road was 38 miles an hour. Nobody here believes that. That's not your fault. It's not the Public Works' fault. Something's wrong in the data collection. That's all I ask. I had two traffic motor cops at my house, stand out in front of the house with me and watch traffic coming and going. Experts in court. They had speeds at 50 and 60 miles an hour. By estimation, we didn't bring out radar. Trust me, if I bring out radar and my neighbors are willing to help me pay for it. We will put out our radar and I'll give you the the results of that. So I'm not questioning your response by no means. Chad and I are friends, we're colleagues. I trust him. I don't trust the data. So I'm asking that we revisit that. I know of one car that went up and down that road four times at 60 miles an hour. I know that for a fact. It never showed up on the survey. Survey had the highest speed at 37, 60 miles an hour is substantially more than 37. So here we are at the standing point. We can work. I talked to Toll Brothers and they said they're not going to put any gates in until the neighbors decide that they want to have gates. Gates will solve every problem unless they put the gates at the top of the hill, which is probably what they propose. And I understand that the majority of the traffic problems we are having are by the trades. That's the people, the construction workers that are going up and down, up and down. And I, and I shared with the chief that during the weekends, when they're not the trades going up and down, the speeds are pretty reasonable. These are people going up there to buy a one to $2 million house. They're being pretty reasonable. And hopefully, that's where we get to. But in the meantime, and if that's not the case, and it's going to be that one person who comes down the hill or actually, shockingly, goes up the hill at 60 miles an hour. That's going to cause a concern. So I appreciate the response, chief, the response from you. And the collection of the data, and you shared it. We've had some conversations, so we, I appreciate the input. Not here to challenge anything other than the data.
So, so Bill, we'll, we'll get hopefully that box back out there and we'll.
We'll bring another box. Don't bring that box.
We're going to check the, check that data.
And have it point on the road and not down the court. Put the the little strips down there or something. Otherwise, my neighbors and I, we have the radar, we'll go out there and we'll do it for you.
We used to have a spare radar gun and we might still do that. So there may be an opportunity for me to loan that gun to you as well. I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah, you didn't give it to me. I probably used it back in the day. But thank you. Thanks for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Kathy Palmerton. I live at the corner of 5314 Fairway Drive, right on the corner of Fairway and Sunset. First of all, I want to thank you for having this meeting. I think it's awesome. I want to say thank you to Chief Butler and to our first responders. Thank you. And thank you and welcome, Chief Williams. Two items I have is, we've lived on that corner for 32 years. We know it's a main artery. We know there's traffic. But the speeders are getting worse. The ones that try to beat the light, nobody goes 45 or 40 or 45. They're 55 and 60. I can identify the cars by type and color. They're too fast for me to get a picture with my phone. So I'd like something to do with some either kind of slow down those things that say this is your speed or radar or something. I want your radar gun after you get it to just keep these people safe. It's just, it's ridiculous. We don't open our doors and windows except in the late evening because it's too noisy. We know that. With the windows closed and the doors closed, my husband's disabled vet, hard of hearing, we have jumped off the sofa from the noise of the speeders going up the street. Second item along with that, we've identified probably at least four of these new cars, mostly Camaros, that have the new mufflers on them or the headers, whatever, that are super loud, that used to not be allowed, that are, they're selling them now, that like to speed shift as they come off a fairway drive, either up Sunset or down Sunset and go from first to third to fifth before they hit the end of the open space. Sometimes I feel like they're coming through my window. That's got to be stopped. Those people are going to fishtail. The Corvette that we know about already did. He spun out on Fairway. We saw him. He hit the wall by the rental unit, the storage area over there. They're going to, they're going to cause some damage and they're unsafe. And the noise is just scary. I don't know what can be done about it, but hopefully something.
So let me ask you, what time generally on Sunset are you seeing?
Mostly between 4:30 and 8 o'clock.
PM?
PM. The one car is pretty, I've been trying to figure out what days he comes. Sometimes 10:30 and 11:30 he'll do it. 11:34 was the latest that we heard him burn rubber up the street. I have contacted the City Traffic Division. Unfortunately, it was the night that the protesters were supposed to hit here. And so I think my, my complaint went down to the bottom because you guys are pretty busy. So they know about it and I have a couple pictures, but no license plates. So I don't know if we can get cameras or if they would help. I don't know. I'm asking for your help.
I appreciate that. And what I'll do is, if you haven't had a chance to put your name and your phone number on the.
I will do it again.
Please do that, and then we'll have Sergeant Wilks reach out to you.
Okay.
And see if we can try to set something up specifically during the timeframes when these are occurring. It's best for us with 500 miles of roadway and, you know, well over 2,000 stop signs now. It's best for us to have that that data that we know when things are occurring.
Right.
We know that there are traffic issues that are occurring in here. Sometimes they're very sporadic. And lots of times when a large Chevy Tahoe, black and white car is in the area, the cars aren't doing what they normally do. And so we try to get our motor units, which are a lot easier to to hide, to be able to get out there and do that. But again, you're you're traversing 500 miles of roadway and, you know, the 2,000 stop signs. So having this kind of data is wonderful. And that helps us be able to stick to a plan.
Well, our house faces this direction. And we have a driveway on the other side of the garage that two motor cops could sit there and nobody could see them.
Perfect.
You're welcome.
Always good to shoot radar there. Thank you.
I'll also mention that I mean, this is where I'm excited about the ITS program that's coming because it's going to give us the ability, especially on something like Sunset Boulevard, to come up with a speed that we want traffic to to go through. And during the peak hours, at least, we can control that. Now, if someone's going to be a knucklehead and start fishtailing and stuff on a corner, you know, there's not a lot of engineering solutions for that. But at least trying to get traffic to move at a consistent speed. That is one thing I'm excited about, to to have that ability to free up our our patrol officers and our motor officers to go and look at other things. Because if we can time those platoons of traffic to, let's just say, 42 miles an hour, and they're going to catch all the greens and so there's an incentive or a carrot for them to to behave nicely, it'll free up our motor cops to go to other areas where hopefully those problems are reduced. So thank you for sharing.
Hi, folks. Thanks for your service, gents. Appreciate it. I have actually three questions, well, one of which is probably not technically addressable by the Traffic Committee. But first question for Mr. Narker, how often do we look at the the speed limits? Is that an annual assessment? I mean, Stanford Ranch Road, 45 miles an hour, I'm guessing the 85% mark puts us in 52, 53 mile an hour range. That knocks it down to 50, we subtract five and we come up with 45. I see people doing 60 pretty much all day and all night going up Stanford Ranch Road. I don't know if that's something you guys study biannually or.
So the California Vehicle Code specifies that, and we they're evaluated every five years. And then if a change isn't made, it goes, it can be extended to seven years. And then if, so it's evaluated at the five year mark, it's evaluated at the two year mark. And then again, it's evaluated at the 10 year mark. So those are kind of the sticking points. The other things that that can change a speed limit is, for example, if there's a roadway configuration change, that would warrant a reevaluation. So if you added lanes or you subtracted lanes, if a new traffic signal was put in, perhaps that controlled traffic differently. So the vehicle code is very specific on those, but there's other triggers as well that could trigger another evaluation.
I think I'd like to add population growth and, you know, the addition of new businesses along that corridor that would increase traffic or potentially move traffic in that area. I live near the corner of Wildcat and Sunset or Stanford Ranch Boulevard. We got a brand new Taco Bell a couple of years ago. That actually, they turned out to be pretty good neighbors, but we've noticed a lot of traffic, a lot of additional noise, a lot of additional. Well, I call it the Wildcat Raceway now because it seems like every green light, we get at least a couple people willing to go about as fast as they can down Wildcat, you know, heading north towards Lincoln. We laughingly in the neighborhood refer it to, it is muscle cars, monster trucks and motorcycles. And it happens pretty much hourly, if not more frequently. The woman that spoke earlier about the noise being frightening, yeah, that guy makes me really upset when he comes by at 11 o'clock at night with his 1,000 watt subwoofer and vibrates every wall in my house. So, you know, there are definitely some opportunities, I think, to just put it on marked or something, put a marked car there to just kind of visual cue. I don't know if that's something that we could do to try and get people to calm down, making that corner really fast or just trying to drag Stanford Ranch Road from Wildcat to West Oaks. You know, you hear them stand on the gas all the way up until they realize they're going to hit a red light and it happens over and over and over. So it's kind of funny to to watch. I'm actually here at the invitation of Wendy Smith, who pointed me in the direction of this tonight. I don't know if she's here, but thank you, Wendy, if you are. And, you know, I I'm going to take the opportunity, and I spoke with Wendy about this, to just journal for the next five to seven days to try and get closer to those times that Chief spoke about earlier to try and and get some focus on that. I realize resources are constrained. There's just really not, you know, room to put traffic cops on every corner. So those are the two big issues for me, the the speed, the noise there at that intersection. And then one of the things that I wanted to kind of raise to the attention of the committee here, and I don't know if there's some influence that you can direct at the Public Services Division. But I live in Two Oaks. My house backs up to Stanford Ranch. I have what laughingly is referred to as a sound wall between me and a five lane road, six lane road, where people go 55 to 60 miles an hour pretty much all day and night. So it's a freeway or a highway. It does nothing to mitigate sound. I have a new home, dual pane glass, insulated walls, doesn't help. I guess in the center of my home, I have wall art that vibrates practically off the wall when my friends with the 1,000 watt stereos come rolling by. I would really like to encourage the city to consider when rezoning, like light industrial land for residential building, that we do a proper noise study and that we determine whether or not the cinder block sound wall that's six feet high on one side and, I don't know, nine feet high on the other side is going to be sufficient enough to block that traffic noise because it's really loud out there during during rush and and late on the on the weekends. That's all for me.
Appreciate that. And I appreciate that you're going to take the time to to try to journal some of those times down because that really does help us and allow us to send somebody out specifically at the times where these are generally occurring.
But I have to tell you, chief, to be honest with you, I started this on the 14th yesterday. And just during the time of day that I was there, literally every 10 to 20 minutes, there was a race. Loud cars, loud trucks, loud motorcycles, you know, diesel. Some of these modified diesel monster trucks, you know, that that spew out huge columns of black smoke, fantastic. You know, it's just, it it just seems to be, I don't know, kind of far enough out of the way where, you know, there's not a lot of Leo presence in that area. And the sightlines are wide open, so people can, you know, they know that what they can get away with there.
Yeah, the car, the car thing is cyclical, right? About 15 years ago, when the Fast and the Furious first came out, everybody wanted a car that made loud noise. And then that went away for a while, but we are starting to see, you're absolutely correct. We are starting to see that again.
Yeah.
And generally, you can hear those from from much further away. And so that's something we'll be concentrating on as well.
You know, I mentioned it to to Councilman Howden, who lives a bit further down Wildcat, and even he can hear it from his home. So I mean, it's, it's.
I live in town too, and I I get to hear it too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. My name is Sheri Meyerhoff.
My name is Sheri Meyerhoff. I've lived here for 20 years. Welcome. Hello, Mr. Butler.
Hi.
Narker, I have a question for you.
Go for it.
It's the ITS, is that what it's called? ITS?
If that's what you're asking about, yes.
Is that the lights? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question about that.
Okay.
So is that the connectivity? They're all going to be connected to go off at the same time? Is that what?
So yes and no. So what it is, is we will be running programs and, and right now, I'm really interested to see how this is going to work because of COVID, right? With pre-COVID, we had certain traffic patterns that were pretty consistent throughout the city. We've got a lot more people working from home. We've seen a lot of traffic patterns. So I'm interested to see how adjustable this is going to be. But the goal is when, to move platoons of traffic from one side of Sunset all through to the other, to try to facilitate that, that movement of traffic. And so hopefully if, if they're going like, like I said, like 43 miles an hour, we can get them to get some consistent greens, encourage them to drive reasonably and, and move that traffic through town. So I don't know if your question's about that or?
Well, I live off of Stanford Ranch and Park.
Okay.
Verbatim from what he said, exact same thing going on. Park goes up and it stops. So it comes down through Whitney Oaks. There's no exit yet to 65. So all the growth and all the buildup there stops. There's no way to get out, right? So it's the same thing. When all the cars go up there, there's, they have to come back down the same way. So it's up and down, up and down. There's no exit.
Well, on Stanford Ranch and Park Drive, we will see those as a future phase for the ITS.
Well, that was my question.
Yes.
When is there going to be any kind of, you know, way to get out? Any kind of exit to 65?
Oh, as far as I could, so you're asking about the entrance at Whitney Ranch Parkway and Park Drive where they connect?
Okay, Park. There's a way to get out, right? There was anyway.
So the developer has told us that that is supposed to, they, and PG&E, everybody's waiting on PG&E.
I mean, everything, it seems to me that everything else is getting done, but that.
So that is
That was Clover Valley at one time and so that was going to be built out, but then.
Okay, so the development portion of it is, the timing of that is really developer run. The city is hands off on that. All of that land is developer owned until they release it to us. And I'm talking about how Whitney Ranch Parkway continues.
Correct.
And it will, it will intersect with Park Drive at some point, right there at the intersection of Whitney Oaks and Whitney Ranch Parkway.
So we have a lot of traffic coming down there from Park. There's, there's two schools. There's Rockland High School, there's Granite Oaks.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a ton of traffic, same thing.
So as far as the road opening up, that will open up?
Sometime beginning of next year.
About a year, year and a half.
To 65?
To the Whitney Ranch area, if that's the area that we're talking about?
And so they'll get the traffic.
Yep. As far as the ITS becoming phase two, I think we'll have a better idea of when that get, is going to get implemented after we finish off phase one. So we're kind of in a wait and see period. We've got to see what investments we need to make from an engineering standpoint to get everything coordinated. So I, I think we're a couple of years out before looking at when phase two would be implemented on, along like Stanford Ranch Road, Crest Drive. So I hope that answers your question. Do you have another question?
I'm going to put it on the card.
Okay.
I don't want to complain.
Okay.
I understand.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Mitchell. I live off of Argonaut in Mission Hills. And I like a lot of the things you guys have done so far and I'm excited about the ITS that you proposed. But I wanted to somewhat talk about this, speed humps. I've had the experience of being in a private neighborhood, as Mr. Hurtalk has mentioned, where there are speed humps and they seem to work pretty well and they're pretty in intrusive. And for some streets that won't, might indirectly be affected by the ITS, perhaps Argonaut or Whitney, to have some of those there may be effective. And I know nothing about traffic studies. So if it's, if it's crazy idea, then I won't be offended if that's what you think. But I know there's repeatedly, the Wham has repeatedly been a problem area that is unlikely to be resolved by some of the other solutions that you're coming up with, I would guess. So just wanted to raise that point. I agree with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, good evening. My name is Leandra Marquez. I have a few questions. Can you tell me what does the city of, the police department's traffic unit look like? What's it comprised of? Do you have an actual traffic unit that's out enforcing traffic or is that left up to patrol officers?
It's both. So currently our, our unit is a little slim through some injuries, but generally we, we have two motors and now we have a new traffic sergeant and then also our patrol officers as part of their regular duties.
Okay. My next question, in looking over the collision statistics, what is the policy of the city or, you know, specific report, reporting criteria related to non-injury accidents? Do you take those when someone calls, fender benders?
Yes, generally those should be taken as a non-injury accident. I can't say that they all are, depending on how far into the exchange of information somebody may be before we get there. But generally those all should be taken.
Okay, because the reason I ask, I've been told twice now that non-injury collisions are not, not reported or reports are not taken by the city and they have suggested an exchange of information. And in one particular incident, I was trying to help somebody that it had escalated into an argument and then the police department elected to respond. So in looking at the statistics going down, it made me question as to whether or not the city takes non-injuries.
And as a non-police officer, let me kind of comment on that real quick. This is something that the chief and I have been working on for, for a little bit now of trying to change that habit. I think at some point, some officers got out of the habit because they were focused on other things. And we've been able to have discussions with those officers about what it means to my side of the shop. Historically, public services is not qualified for any traffic safety grants because we're too safe, which is a good problem to have. You know, most, you know, if you go talk to someone in Roseville or Sacramento, they would like to have our, our numbers. But some of it is because we're not, we, in the past, we weren't getting reports. So I know that, that mentality has been changing. I know the training has been changing regarding the importance of taking those, not necessarily for them, but for our side of things from the engineering. Because if, if we don't have the data, if we don't have the numbers, it's hard for us to make an argument to the feds or to the state about why we need funds for this or that. And so, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, thank you. Along the lines of the Whitney Ranch Parkway opening at some point, what is currently being looked at for traffic calming measures? Are there any roundabouts or anything that's being kicked around for that because of the expansive stretch of roadway in the hill? And I know it's an ongoing headache for the police department. It's, it's a raceway.
So yes, it's being looked at. Right now, am I allowed to talk about top secret stuff? I mean, I really like to. Yeah, okay, perfect. It's not on Zoom. There's nobody taking notes. Yes, it is. Park Drive specifically is an interesting animal because it's a four lane arterial roadway that was designed to carry a lot of vehicles and it was designed to carry them at a higher rate of speed. In the past, there was supposed to be a connection between Park Drive and Sierra College Boulevard. I don't know what that road was supposed to be called, but that connection there would have been a, a significant cut through, if you will, for that side of Placer County through the city of Rockland. And that's not being pursued from what I understand. But because it's so open, our traffic volumes on some parts of Park Drive are as little as 2,000 vehicles a day. And when you have that big of a roadway and you have that much visibility, people usually drive what they feel comfortable. Or if they've got a nice car, they're trying it out a little bit. So some of the things that we have going on right now is we've been partnering with WAVE to get a cable drop out there so that we can get some communications, so that we can install some radar feedback signs, so that we can collect some ongoing data. And having power drops out there will allow us to keep equipment up there consistently and, and longer than perhaps just setting up the road tubes or setting up a traditional radar box that has a battery associated with it. And so we're looking to start collecting more data so that we can look at patterns and use our traffic unit more efficiently. And so we are looking at it. As far as infrastructure, we're not looking at anything yet because time will tell to, with a big roadway like that, let's say you decided to add a landscape medians, that's a multimillion dollar investment for medians. And if you were to invest in that and then a problem never was to come up where, let's say vehicles don't come in that direction, that, that's kind of hard, we would be speculating. So most of what we're looking at doing right now is through the education and enforcement side on, on Park Drive. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, for sure. I think we're also looking at, before you make changes to the roadway, as we're still building and developing up there, is once Whitney Ranch Parkway opens and we start to see what kind of traffic volume we have, whether that's going to change any of the dynamics. And then once we determine whether, we have predictions that we think is going to happen with which way cars are going to continue to travel. If that doesn't happen and we've already come in and say narrowed those lanes back down or added a center median, we'd have to come back out and change that because our predictions were wrong. So we're hoping that roadway is going to be somewhere in the next year. We're going to see that open when the developer, you know, allows us to take possession of that. And like you said, we're waiting for the fires with PG&E. You know, they still got to pull streetlights, electrical streetlights. And we've had that through developments the last couple of years as the fires burn on through California. PG&E sends their crews out and then their, their, their electrical connections fall further and further and further behind. So I think right now we're talking about six months, they're out before they even start pulling electrical. So hopefully in the next
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and play one of my cards though, and I know he's not going to appreciate it right now, but one of our traffic engineering consultants, he, he lives out in that area and he's very aware. And I'm pretty sure that I get a lot of text messages from him with advice and other things. And so as a, as a resident, I think sometimes I'm probably getting more than my money's worth because I know I'm not paying him for that many hours of observations. And I think he gives us a unique perspective where when we have consultants that actually live in the city of Rockland, they've got some skin in the game and they're willing to provide a little bit more advice than I think a consultant that didn't have any skin in the game would, you know, where it was just a paycheck. So we, we've got, we've got some inside sources, I think, back there that are helping look at this on a very regular basis, just so you know.
Is LPR being looked at?
Yes.
Or are we anywhere on that?
Yes.
Okay. So our surrounding agencies, as you know, all have that. So I just, I don't get it. Last question for fire. You may or may not know this. The piece of property on the, at backside, the park area, will that ever be designated for a fire department? You know, in the original plan years back, that was supposed to have been a fire department.
That's your question, Annie. I know who she's talking about. She's talking about the top of Park, near the water thing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So I, from a facility side, in public services, we've got engineering, public works, traffic signals and lighting. We've also, also have fleet and facilities. So these guys are always pulling my ears when they want their cars or, you know, something upgraded or whatever else. From what I understand at this time, they're not considering another fire station. I know they're, they've made some connections for shared services at the bottom of Whitney Ranch, I'm sorry, it's Whitney Ranch Parkway there. Park transitions to Whitney Ranch Parkway just past the stop sign. There is an emergency access connection between Lincoln and Rockland. And so I know under the last shared service agreement, we've, we've got some opportunities for mutual aid, but from, from what I can tell, from what I've seen, there's not another plan to add another fire station. Is that your understanding, Chief?
That is my understanding.
Okay. So whose service is that then? Is it Crest?
Yes.
Crest, Crest or Wildcat, depending on availability, if someone's already on a call and coverage. So it's
But even as all these homes are being built, there's no designation for more fire?
No, when, so one of the, the other areas that is, there in the courtyard, is we have our geographic information systems team that we throw a lot of data their way and they can kind of analyze where our coverage areas are. And in Rockland, our, our coverage areas are, now, I'm not a firefighter, so I'm going to speak at a turn here, but our, from what I can see, our, our coverage areas are pretty well covered now that we have that connection to, to the city of Lincoln for, for that area.
Yeah, and so fire did do a standards of coverage before I got here. And so I'll be reviewing that standards of coverage and making sure that there's equity amongst all of the communities in Rockland for fire station coverage. So that will be something I'll be working on in the next year as I've only been here two and a half months. But I, that's one of my priorities, is to make sure that we have adequate coverage.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience before we move to the Zoom calls? Okay, let's take a Zoom call.
Okay, we'll go ahead and unmute Mr. Stout.
Hello, Mr. Stout, whenever you're ready.
Actually, this is his wife, Sandy. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great. I'm on the laptop in the office, so I want to make sure. Um, I have actually two items that I wanted to discuss with you guys. First off is an issue that's similar to a lot of other residents' concerns. I, we actually purchased our home in April of 2008 on Knight's Way. Our backyard butts up against Park at the Wickford intersection. And we've seen an, an unbelievable increase in the amount of traffic over the last particular two or three years. There's a concern there with additional growth of Rockland. What type of studies does the city perform when it relates it to traffic as well as to the noise impact associated to that traffic? Is, is that, is that something that is actually reviewed or assessed?
Other than that, Chief?
Yep.
Okay, so part of the problem here, and I'm going to preface this, there's a little asterisk with this, is I am the guy that inherits everything that is built. Okay, so Sandy, some of this, of what you're asking is something that I would normally direct towards our planning department. And if I don't answer your question well enough, I'll go ahead and, you know, just punt to them and, and refer you to them. But generally speaking, from what I understand, the, the traffic and noise studies, when those are conducted, they're looking at build out for the city of Rockland. So that is taking into consideration all of the development edit is, as it's identified at, at that time, and looking at the intensities and so forth, and looking at the volumes, it's reviewed at that time. And by that build out, you, using, modeling it for build out, they're then building the infrastructure to suit the, the results of those studies. So it, as far as like noise studies now, from what I'm aware of, there, there, I have never participated in a follow-up noise study unless there was a change in development intensity or land use. And then I've, then I've seen traffic and noise studies associated with that change in zoning or of the general plan.
Okay, because our subdivision, which is San Marin, when it was originally built out back in the Okay, because our subdivision, which is San Marin, when it was originally built out back in the late nineties, was surrounded by wood fences. So right now, that's the only thing that we have to protect us against the traffic that's now exceeding sixty to seventy miles per hour behind us. And that's now become a safety concern as well, in addition to the sound concern. So that was, that would be something we would follow up with the planning department?
No, because you're not, because you don't have a magnet in front of you. I'll give you my phone number. Nine one six. And I mean, this is my direct line. I guess this is not on here and everybody's, I give this out to everybody. Nine one six, six two five, five five one four. Because your question's a little bit more complicated because when a development comes in. They either pay into one or both, a lighting and landscape district and a community facilities district. And those districts are there to pay for ongoing maintenance of the infrastructure that's identified. And right now, that subdivision is maintaining wood fence. And so the cost to go to a masonry fence or a wall would be significant. And so. Trying to figure out how to fund that improvement. There's a challenge associated with that. And so that's something that you and I can, can talk about. You know, that's more of a funding strategy. Then, you know, is it equitable? Because I know, for example, when your, your place was built, our design standards have changed over the years. And that's not considered an acceptable standard now. But, you know, it, it doesn't quite correct the, the concern that you have right now.
Okay, great. I'll follow up with you because yeah, there's several concerns that I have as well as my neighbors, sort of also speaking on a few of their behabs. The last question actually that I have relates to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget that was published just a short time ago. In there, there's a line item relating to roundabouts being built out on Pacific Street, somewhere with a price tag of around three million dollars. Is that something that you guys could expand on, on, on what that is?
So right now, and I, I don't know the specific details. We pay a lot of taxes here in California. A lot of them go back to Washington. Some of that money is coming back to us in the form of a CMAC grant. And that is a congestion. Mitigation, air quality grant. I had to write it out just to remember what it was. The, the roundabouts that we put on Rockland Road, we used this money some years ago. And we use this federal money that is specifically for congestion mitigation, air quality for roundabouts because roundabouts, unlike a traffic signal. There's improved air quality benefits with a roundabout. And so when we were looking at the intersection of Pacific and. Rockland Road. At some point, we were going to need to add additional lanes. And when you add additional lanes at that intersection, you have to consume considerable right of way from the adjoining businesses. And if you're familiar with that intersection, like I, I think you are, we've got the Animal Eye Center on one side. We've got Cafe Deliciaus on the other. We've got a. Super Steve's Gas Station and then we've got a vacant lot. What a roundabout allows us to do is push the center of the intersection away from those developed properties and utilize the vacant property. And so when we were looking at our options for addressing. Future traffic demands at that intersection, a model roundabout. Served the congestion concerns and it, we were able to push it in such a way that we were able to address. Purchasing businesses along that corridor and affecting, you know, negative, negatively affecting them. You know, by buying them up. So yes, the, the cost to retrofit an area for a roundabout is significant because you're moving utilities, you're moving. A lot of different things around your purchasing right of way. And in this case, right now, we're able to capitalize on that grant, that federal grant. And kind of keep our local gas tax money for roadway maintenance, maintenance purposes and, and take care of that. So. I, I hope that answers your question.
I think it does. So just to clarify, you're talking about one additional roundabout at the intersection of Pacific and Rockland Road? Because I think I may have heard Sierra College and Rockland Road, but you're talking about a roundabout at Pacific slash Taylor and Rockland Road.
Got two, one at South Grove, one at Myers, and this is proposed for the intersection of Rockland Road and, and Pacific.
Okay, gotcha. So there's three roundabouts proposed?
Already in existence and one coming on the way.
Okay, okay, yeah. So that kind of stays consistent with the roundabouts that are already on, on Rockland Road.
Long-winded engineering explanation. Sorry about that.
Gotcha. So it, so it'd be that one additional one at that intersection. Okay, great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Any more on Zoom? Okay, anybody else in the, in the audience? Okay, well, that will conclude our meeting. Thank you so much for attending.
Thank you. If you have any individual questions.
Five five one four.
Or, or feel free to come up.
Lander, we, we are looking at them actually, obviously not, we, we actually have some in town. We haven't been told.